Good afternoon, everybody. Sorry for the delay in start, but we were at Busby Street at our beautiful park facility there, working on some exciting housing options. I love it. Yeah, we're gonna do it now.
Give it a few minutes.
Yep. We're gonna get the clerk a second, and we're gonna call the roll, take care of some business here, and then we're gonna get down to it. Got some exciting things today happening here in the city. Madam Clerk, are you ready to read the roll?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon to you.
Mr. Bailey.
Present.
Mr. Brown.
Present.
Ms. Herbert.
Here.
Dr. Bustles.
Here.
Mr. Brennan.
Present.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mayor Rickman.
Here.
Thank you.
Reverend McDowell, do you mind saying a word?
As bow heads. Gracious and eternal, we thank you for this day. We thankful for all the things you've allowed us to accomplish today, but yet there are many things left undone, many discussions, many conversations. We pray now that you might touch us individually as a council, touch us in a kind of way that your spirit might implode within us, that we might feel the winds of the spirit. We ask it and claim it in your name. Amen.
Amen. Everybody, please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Mr. Mayor, are you ready to proceed?
Yes, ma'am.
We would ask for council to adopt the agenda amending the following items, a deferral of items 19, 20, 35, actually, all of the appointments, I believe, is that correct, Mr. Mayor?
That was the request of council, yes, ma'am.
So that would be items 32 through 37. And, Mr. Mayor, I know you'll speak to this momentarily. In addition, we would add, under the period of referrals, reports, and new business, referral, a referral of item, a referral to a work session administratively to discuss items 19 and 20 holistically. Yes, sir. Regarding short-term rental regulations, and that work session is currently being scheduled for August the 5th, with the time to be confirmed.
That's correct.
Okay.
With that, is there a motion?
To move.
We've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing done, seeing none. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Ms. Herbert.
Aye.
Dr. Bustles.
Aye.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mayor Rickman.
Aye.
And, Mr. Mayor, just for clarity, for the sake of the public, the items regarding the short-term rentals, which were items 19 and 20, as we stated, will be, are being deferred, and they will be taking up that subject matter during a work session instead of a council committee where they were currently on place.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
At this point, I'm gonna take a point per, I asked for us to get the short-term rentals on our agenda because I felt like we really needed to get moving forward on enforcement and changing some of the issues that we know. So, over the last year and a half, we've been gathering all the data, and while we were gathering the data, we did it so that we could understand the issues that we're dealing with. In the last couple of days, we've gotten some really good input, and so getting that input is very important for us to put forth. What I wanted to do tonight was actually never not take a vote, but actually bring forth for discussion, to talk about looking at how we change. Do we go to two-night minimums, you know, making sure that we look at the age, right now, it's 18. Do we go to 21? Do we go to 25, like a rental car? Looking at the gaps that we see are problems and how we address those. We also are gonna, we've also asked our city manager to work with David Hatcher in allowing them to hire the necessary personnel for them to help enforce those issues. And that's everything going across. We have applicants who have applications for X amount of, based on what's allowed, which is two people per bedroom, but are advertising for 24 and 32 people in houses. They've added bunk beds and all kinds of other things that are against their application, and we have to have the ability to address that issue because that becomes a quality-of-life issue, and that means that when you signed your application process, you weren't truthful with us. There are also, I want to be very clear, there are 139 non-registered operating Airbnbs who we're going to notify Airbnb, VROB, Casa Home, and every other listing there is to let them know that you are not licensed in Columbia, South Carolina, and we've given you opportunity to get licensed, and you chose to continue not to get licensed. That is a problem. We also wanted to put on, the reason the moratorium piece was on there, because we've got to decide, and we got to further the conversation, and we need to do it sooner and later. Look, the enforcement, we need to be able to make the changes, get the staff into place before we get into the fall, because we are gonna see, there's a lot happening in our community over the next nine months, and we need to be prepared for that. We want to keep it rewarding those who follow the rules, who run a good business, but those people who've been skirting, hiding, and cheating, I hate to tell you, your days are numbered. We are not, we are not gonna do that. This is an opportunity for us to show how we can do this right together. We know in the beginning, there were some things that were chosen not to be done as part of the rules, and now we see that some of those need to be brought forth, some new ideas need to be brought forth, and some more input. We've gotten great input from folks that are STR owners. We've gotten great input from folks that are neighbors. We've gotten great input from neighborhoods. Now, we're going to address those. So, on August 5th, we're gonna have a work session and full discussion going through. We're gonna publish some of the thoughts that we have already, as I said, changing the occupancy. A point got brought up earlier about, you know, business travel weekends should be multiple-night requirements, days may be cheaper for the business folks that are coming in and out. Those are things we need to talk about. Requiring host-to-screen bookings to make sure that somewhere between 30 and 50, 30-mile radius, that they're not just booking it for a house party, they're actually booking it for a reason. There are some new standards, some new technology allow us to keep up with compliance that we want to adopt, so we're going to address those. There are several things that we will put out, we're gonna put out. We're still taking input. I encourage you to share your thoughts with us. The work session and that evening meeting will be public input. That'll give you an opportunity to do it. I was hoping we could get further along today, but the reason I asked for it to be on the agenda, because we were going to a committee process, and that committee wasn't gonna be able to meet until late August, and that was gonna be too long. We need to get these measures in before Labor Day. I'm hoping that at the point, whoever's phone it is, might want to answer in another room.
That's mine.
It is. Ed, I think your bag's calling.
Oh, my bag's calling. Well, I tell you, I was looking around public phone.
I've heard it a couple of times, and we didn't know it was your bag calling in. But it's important for us to have a balance across the city, across our neighborhoods and so forth. My fear was, is this was only meeting in July, and if we didn't try to get the conversation moving, we were gonna be too late to address some of the issues that are very important to all of us. So, we look forward to your input. For those of you who came here today, you're welcome to stay till the end of the meeting and have a conversation. You can email, you can come, there'll be multiple times to outreach with everybody here. We're all taking input, but we're gonna make changes. We're going to put more staffing into place for enforcement. We're also gonna have folks that are gonna be engaged, your point person, to be engaged so that you have one point of contact to really work and address this. And I think unfortunately, some of the folks that aren't abiding by the rules probably won't if we don't change things, and those folks of you who do, thank you. Thank you for being good neighbors. Thank you for investing and doing things the proper way, and we're gonna work with you to ensure that the opportunities stay before us, but we are gonna, we're gonna take action on August 5th to get these enhanced, and it's not gonna be perfect, folks. I'm gonna be, there's nothing that we, that anybody ever does, including yourselves and other folks, that are always perfect. It's gonna be evolving. One of the things that I was reminded about is that, you know, at one time, we talked about having a committee, so once these rules are changed, I think we have some STR owners, we have some neighborhood representation, and we have some council and staff representation meeting on a quarterly basis, reviewing the data, reviewing the enforcement, and reviewing the good things that are happening, and if there are things that we need to tweak and change. It's gonna be an evolving process, like anything in life. Things change. The market changed. Markets changed now. We have 466 STRs now, and two years ago, there were 800. The market's changed. Things change for a reason, but we're gonna address it, so don't think your voice is not being heard, but also want to be very clear that I didn't want this to drag out and we end up going into the fall with a lot of issues. And I appreciate your patience. I'm gonna try to put more things like this on the agenda, because I love having a packed house, because you actually can see that we're doing work here, but I appreciate everybody's time and effort to this point today, and we're gonna continue to work together. With that, I did want to take another point of personal privilege. We wanted to recognize our legislative chief of staff for her birthday, Shanique Belton, and we wanted to thank you for all your hard work. We know it's your birthday. We couldn't do our jobs without you, and we appreciate you being the glue, and we wanted to make sure we recognized you. I know it's a couple of days late, but I knew you didn't want to meet on a Saturday, so we're here.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We will now have the approval of minutes. Item number one, council is asked to approve the May 27, 2025 special call meeting minutes, the June 17, 2025 work session and regular meeting minutes, and the June 24, 2025 work session and special call meeting minutes.
So moved.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion, changes, anything needed? Hearing done, seeing none. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mayor, I wanted to just thank Levany for her hard work during the past couple of weeks on the minutes, but thank you. Mr. Bailey.
Hey, that's how I praise you.
Thank you.
Man, we got the best clerk in the state, and she's given her assistant the praise. I think that deserves another round of applause.
Mr. Bailey.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Ms. Herbert.
Aye.
Dr. Bustles.
Aye.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. McDowell.
Mayor Rickman.
Aye.
Thank you. Presentations. Item number two, Columbia Rhinos Rugby National Championships Day Proclamation, the Honorable Daniel J. Rickman.
Can we get the champions up front? I wish it was out of five, after five o'clock, so we could have a drink out of one of those Gentlemen, y'all made us proud. I remember y'all said y'all were gonna make this happen, and we've been working, at some point, we're gonna have, knock on wood, we hope, to have our own rectangular arena that y'all can display that trophy in and be part of a whole bunch of groups that want to come here and be part of our community, and we're excited about it, but I want to read this proclamation to you guys. The Columbia Rhinos Rugby Football Team has proudly represented the city of Columbia for five decades, embodying the spirit of sportsmanship, dedication, community pride. May 18, 2025, they achieved the historic milestone by winning the 2025 U.S. Rugby Men's Division III National Championship in Indianapolis, Indiana. The Rhinos demonstrated exceptional talent, perseverance throughout the national playoffs, securing victories over defending national champs, the Austin Blacks, Brevard County RFC, the powerhouse Rocky Gorge, and ultimately triumphing over the Scottsdale Blue. And I know all these mayors, so I can't wait till I see them to remind them that we took them out on the rugby field. These championships represents not only an athletic achievement, but a 50-year journey of growth, commitment, and community, with generations of players contributing to the legacy of rugby in Columbia. The Columbia Rhinos are composed of unpaid athletes who dedicate their time, energy to the game out of passion, loyalty, love for their team, their city, serving as role models for perseverance, teamwork, community engagement. So, the city of Columbia takes great pride in recognizing, honoring organizations that bring national attention and distinction to our community. So, there, I, as the mayor of Columbia, South Carolina, along with my fellow council members who do hereby proclaim, July 15, 2025, is Columbia Rhinos Rugby National Championships Day, and everybody, please join me in giving them a big round of applause. I don't know who would like to speak, but you're welcome to say a few words before, before we present you with the plaque.
Is this on? All right. Ladies and gentlemen of the Columbia City Council, thank you very much for this proclamation and your dedication to recognizing our team. Since 1973, our team has been established, and we've been more than just a rugby team. We've been a family, and we've been a brotherhood. Each one of the members standing behind me and some of those who cannot make it today, each show their dedication to their individuals to their left and their right, on and off of the rugby field. Not only do we wish to, not only do we wish to continue and make it to Nationals next year, we also are search in of a home field and to continue to support the fine city of Columbia. Thank you again, city council members, and everyone behind me who is viewing this today. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
We're gonna, we're gonna make all the rugby players our short-term. Let's see if these in here is. I don't want to. Yes. Great. Okay, ready? One, two, three. One, two, three. Gotcha. Thank you.
Man, I'm gonna tell you what, we've had some championships. We got women's tennis, golf, we got basketball, rugby, killing it. We're killing it.
And, Mr. Mayor.
Love it.
I would add, we could possibly find them a field along football field, somebody pickleball course, we could make some room for rugby.
I'll let you take on that fight, Tyler. I don't fight with the pickleball folks. They make the rugby people look minor.
Ready, Mr. Mayor?
Oh, I'm ready.
All right. Parks and Recreation Month Proclamation, the Honorable Daniel J. Rickman, Mayor.
All right. Mr. Bryant, you gonna bring your crew up here? From center, come on, Parks and Recs.
Parks and Recs in the house, sir. We in the house.
It's a whole nother team. I know. No, y'all come on, y'all are good.
Wow.
I like this crowd, man.
Yeah, I see somebody up there. You recognize?
Oh, yeah.
Mr. Bryant, did you want to say something with your small group of folks here before we talk about this proclamation?
Well, first, I want to say, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to say thank you to all the members of council for all of your support. Thank you to the city manager, our ACM, Mr. Henry Simons, and I really want to say thank you to my team. We have a great team, and I really want them to know, I'm gonna say this publicly, that I don't take for granted all the ground that we cover, I don't take for granted all the people that we serve, and I don't take for granted all the work that you all do. Y'all do a great job, and I'm honored to be part of this team. So, now, when I tell them to get to work, they're gonna move fast enough.
Wow. They show up, don't they, every day, making our city great, promoting everything. I'm gonna read this because I do think it's important to read it, and, you know, Parks and Recreation Month is important to the life of the city, and everybody who works in that department brings something special to our city all the way across the board, and always have. And to have everybody here in front of us today, seeing some new faces, seeing a lot of familiar faces, but seeing a lot of history, a lot of passion, a lot of love for our community, is incredible. And first of all, we want to thank each and every one of you, what you do every day. You make people feel good about themselves. You make people look at Columbia like, this is the place I should be living, because they're interacting with you on a day-to-day basis. They get to see the best of Columbia, and you are that. And I just want to thank each and every one of you, from the river to our parks, to our baseball fields, to all the special events that we do. You're all part of it. You're part of, think about it, there are 326 or more events a year in Columbia, and you probably have your hand in the majority of them. Think about that. How many people y'all touch? If it's pickleball, from Drew Wellness Center to the health, to our Zumba classes in Greenview, which I can't keep up with any of the 80-year-olds, which is embarrassing, but to the dedication y'all give, I really, from the bottom of our hearts, thank y'all for what you do. Parks and Recs are an integral part of our communities throughout this country, including Columbia. Parks and Recs promotes health, wellness, improving physical and mental health, which is probably more important than anything else today, of the people who live near parks. Parks and Recs promotes time and nature, which positively impacts mental health by increasing cognitive performance, well-being, elevating illnesses such as depression, attention deficiency disorders, and Alzheimer's. I'm not singling anybody out, but more time in the park may help. Parks and Recs encourages physical activities from providing spaces for popular sports, hiking trails, swimming pools, and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyles. Columbia's Parks and Recreation Office diverse community-wide programs that fulfill the recreational needs of our youth, seniors, adults, and the department's programs include after-school activities, community gardens, cultural arts, summer camps, athletic programs, outdoor adventures, which Karen, you still owe me a trip from the damn down, I won't forget, senior programs, youth programs. Well, they took it a step further. They launched Park and Play this year. Park and Play Recreation Ban to meet the needs of those who don't have access to parks and gymnasiums, making sure that we touch every corner of our community. It completed its 10-year master plan, providing a framework for the future development and redevelopment of our parks and recreation system over the next 10 years, to serve as a roadmap for policy development concerning location, usage, resources allocations, and levels of service. If you look at what we're investing in our parks, Ride by Maze Park, you've never seen so many kids in that park in three decades. People are engaged. When we unveil Finley Park, I think people are gonna go crazy. The greenway and the trailways, where we have 27 miles of trail on our riverfront, our parks and our neighbor, our newest little park over on Randolph, it may be a little small park, but it's mighty, and it's gonna make a difference. All of it is done with the caring and support of this staff. From new playground equipment in Hyatt Park, Melrose Park, Hampton Park, Sunshades, and Martin Luther King, Hyatt Park, Parks and Recs opened up the Joseph Azar Community Garden at TS Martin, but the best of all, we get to recognize you all today. As we recognize July 2025 as Parks and Recreational Month, so I, Daniel Rickman, as the mayor of Columbia, South Carolina, along with fellow members of Columbia City Council, do hereby proclaim and recognize July 2025 as Parks and Recreation Month. Congratulations.
Okay. Absolutely. Absolutely. Y'all want to?
Kenya. May I say a word, Mr. Mayor, right quick? Right quick.
I have a question.
Kenya, thank you so much for all that you do and your team does for this city. This city would not be a part of this glorious endeavor called Columbia if it were not for Parks and Recs. Thank you so much. I thank every team member, including my grandson, who's a member of the team. Thank you so much for entrusting talents and all the things that take place in Parks and Recs. Thank you so much, and we are, we're gonna look for bigger and better things. Thank you. Thank you, Kenya.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir.
One more thing. The gentleman standing behind you, this gentleman right here, what's your name? Nate? So I would did, you know, we do the game nights, and I watched this young man play for real. No, I mean seriously, played for real, hours and hours, and I was so touched because you have a spirit. You can tell when people have a spirit to work with the kids or not. And the funniest thing was at some point, he said, "Yeah, I'm surprised they stayed this long." And I was like, "Oh, yeah, I'm Councilman Herbert," and he was shocked, because he didn't, he didn't even know who I was, which was good. But I wanna commend you because I watched you play with those kids, um, and you did an excellent job, and you gave them all of your attention, um, and I thought you did a great job. And so I, I'm sure, I, well, I could say something about a whole bunch of people, but I won't do that, 'cause I get in trouble, so I won't do that. But I just had to mention him because, um, I just was really impressed, the young man.
A little too.
Mama G.
Good.
Come on, y'all said y'all are family, scream. Got feelings, too?
Everybody good? Yeah, slot is that one.
This one?
There we go. All right. Three, two, one. Okay, that's it.
Go Parks!
Mr. Mayor and council, this team knows that I absolutely adore them. We have the great fun and easy conversations, and we have the hard conversations, but they always get it done. And I started my day-to-day at WA Perry Middle School with the Freedom School Summer Program, reading to some kids. And I always ask young, our youngest citizens, what does their city do for them, to try to help them understand what governance is about? And every single time, obviously, the students or young people say, "I love going to the pool, I love going to the park." So these, um, employees are the first touchpoints for our youngest citizens, but they're often the lasting touchpoint for our oldest citizens with the program in that they do for our seniors, and we really appreciate them. I wanted to shout out Kenya, he's brought exceptional leadership to the department. Um, and I wanna shout out ACM Simons, who gives exceptional coaching and leadership to that team, so thank you. And with that, we are at the Consent Agenda Items 4 through 17.
Some move, Mr. Mayor. Got a motion and a second? Any changes, questions, concerns? Hearing none, seeing none. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickman?
Aye.
Thank you.
Consideration of bids, contracts, and change orders, item 18, council, is asked to approve. Mr. Mayor, uh, I forgot about the, yeah. We did, we failed to ask for public input at the beginning. Do you wanna stop and do that now, or maybe one person who had? It wasn't on the agenda, um, and so I apologize.
Wasn't anything that we've already talked about yet, has it?
No, sir.
No, it was not.
We got caught up in the excitement of champions and recognitions that we forgot to.
And that was an oversight on my part, and so for public input, we have Ms. Jennifer Suber, she's here to speak on item 38. And as Ms. Suber comes forward, we will, um, state that you have three minutes to speak, and we'd ask that you adhere. All right, thank you. Well, we've done our due diligence. We also had Mr. Pauling sign up. He's with, uh, Richland County, but I'm not sure that he wants to speak. Mr. Pauling?
Yep.
Well, that was it. Thank you all.
Thank you, thank you. And item 18, again, under consideration of bids, contracts, and change orders, is an item to approve the American Institute of Architects Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment Number Two for the project, as outlined as a construction manager at risk project for the city. The public safety complex at 400 Laurel Street is requested by General Services on July 3rd, 2025. They award going to Reeves Young LLC in an amount not to exceed $16,958,927, which includes contingency. This firm is located in Beaufort, Georgia.
Mr. Mayor, motion to approve?
Second. Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion? I'm very excited about this project, I'm ready for it to move forward. It's gonna be a great investment for us to have a public safety center, um, at 400 Laurel. Um, it's gonna encompass a lot, it's gonna allow us to dispose of some other properties, but really bring cohesiveness to our CPD. Um, the chief has been, um, pretty happy about this, to say the least. Uh, but we're excited about what it's gonna bring for us, for our community, and, um, I'm ready to move it forward. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Herbert? Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickman?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you for all the support there, Mr. Mayor and council. Ordinance says first reading, item 21, ordinance number 2025-056, authorizing the city manager to execute a license agreement between MBCon and the City of Columbia for a lay-down area at the corner of Drayton Street and North Main Street for the Palmetto Citizens Headquarters.
Mr. Mayor, some move?
Second.
Um, we got a motion and a second. I had to get oriented for a second.
And so this is a portion of the property that we own, and we did, um, seek a lot of input from our neighborhood leaders down there, because we know that oftentimes some of that property is, has been used for some events. But we tried to do our due diligence on that and make sure they know, we'll make sure there's opportunity for them to have it as they would need to, Mr. Mayor.
Um, we got a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Seeing none, hearing none. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Herbert? Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickman?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item 22, ordinance number 2025-060, considering to the inclusion of property in a multi-county industrial business park, project momentum, and this was endorsed by the Economic Development and Infrastructure Committee on June 17th, 2025.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Very excited about. Nice project coming to the city of Columbia, looking forward to, uh, seeing some dirt move. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickman?
Aye.
Thank you.
Public hearing and first reading for zoning planning matters. Ms. Hampton is here to assist, starting with item 23, an annexation, future land use map amendment and zoning map amendment for 283 Jacobs Mill Pond Road, also known as 180 Golf View Bend.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Yes, this is a request to annex the property, assign a land use classification of urban edge residential large lot, and a zoning of planned development district.
This will be the home of the 2026 Corn Fairy Tour, folks, coming to Columbia, South Carolina. PGA event, very excited about this. Mr. Brennan's gonna be our star, um, pro-am player.
Got choked up on that.
Is there anybody here to speak for or against this annexation?
No one has signed it.
With that, I'll entertain a motion, Mr. Brown?
Motion for approval.
Got a motion, is there a second? Got a motion and a second? Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Brown? Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickman?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item 24 is an annexation, future land use map amendment and zoning map amendment for 1703 Atlas Road. It is a request to annex the property, assign a land use classification of industrial, and a zoning of heavy industrial for the pending annexation.
Is anybody here to speak for or against this item?
Mr. George McCutcheon?
George?
Yes.
The floor is yours.
Hello, council, mayor. Thank you for this opportunity to talk to you today. This is exciting to see all the fun stuff, uh, y'all get to present and work with. And a little bit in that same way, we're trying to grow an existing business, um, that is here on Atlas Road, and I have some handouts. If I could, uh, please, um, give to the council, um, three, three different items, if I could. Basically, what we got here is an existing business that, uh, has been here for eight years and would like to grow their operations. The reason I'm here today is there's a little bit of a gray area, because they are allowed to operate their business in M1 zoning, uh, light industrial in the county. Um, in the city, it, uh, requires heavy industrial. And so basically, under the li- light industrial that the city of the four acres that's directly behind is already zoned for truck parking, and they're growing and need more truck parking. So we're already allowed in the city for the property to be truck parking behind it, as a question of, is it gonna be truck parking for this existing business as they grow, or is it gonna be truck parking for somebody else? So, um, let's see here. Once y'all get those documents, I'll kinda show you through each page, if I could.
And Mr. McCutcheon, while you're waiting, I'll remind you that overall, you have a three-minute time limit. Three minutes.
Three? Okay.
Just keep talking.
Okay. So you can see Suncoast Resources is operating there on the first page. You can see where their, um, Suncoast Resources is acquired by Southern Lubricants, same company. You can see, uh, the total property with the four acres behind it that they're expanding to, and the property in front. You can see where QuickTrip is, uh, coming to that corner relative to where this is, kinda diagonally across Atlas Road. We've got about 70 industrial properties right in the area with this one being in the center of it, so there's a-
So what you want, George, just, i- if I go to page three in the handout, you want the front fact that's facing, you need the zoning for the, what's facing 77. There's no, no access other than the, to come back the other way, correct? So I mean, it's just facing 77.
Yes, it's facing 77 and the railroad track on the other side.
And it's significant driveway upgrades to being made to get access back there, I believe.
Correct, correct. And we've got also five letters of recommendation from neighbors, uh, including, uh, Don Tomlin's company that owns property nearby, uh, as well as all the other neighbors around it, so made sure we got input from neighbors, uh, as well. And then, it's not required, but I do wanna put, uh, declarations of restrictions on it, because some heavy industrial stuff is stuff we're not gonna do at this property, don't intend to do, so we're gonna deed restrict it-
Be restrict it.
Against those, yep.
Any other questions from council?
Any more speakers?
Do you have anybody else signed up for this?
No, sir.
All right. Mr. Mayor, motion to approve?
Second.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Um, Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickman?
Aye.
Thank you.
And the next item is what you've referred to, Mayor. Um, it's related, so it would be a rezoning of that portion of 1801 Smith Street, a request to rezone the property from light industrial to heavy industrial, and it is just this portion.
Is there a motion?
Some move?
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any further discussions or questions? Is there anybody here to speak for or against? I know you're for it, George, we knew that. Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. I'm sorry, sir, please, come forth.
I am Daniel Brooks, and I'm joined by many of my neighbors on that end of Smith Street. Uh, first, let me thank you for the opportunity to see many of my friends recognized today as a 45-year coach in Columbia, 37 at Drea High School, and currently at Gannett College, but-
Tigers.
Go Tigers. Our neighborhood or our lifestyle has drastically changed since this has come to a light industry. So we are extremely concerned about it being heavy industry here. Many of my neighbors are here, and if you would please stand, if any of the neighbors that, that are here are from that, that area of the community. Uh, of course, many couldn't be with us today, but we're really concerned about that going to heavy industry.
Are, with the deed restrictions that they're willing to put on, does that give you the comfort that you need? Have you seen what they're proposing, which means it'll be on the deed with the lands, it'll go with the land?
I would really need to dig into that, a- as well as members of my community, if possible.
So if we do this, a- a- and tell me if this works for you, we'll give it first reading. We'll hold the second reading until you have an opportunity to get with Mr. McCutcheon. Look at those deed restrictions, make any comments, and then we'll hold second reading until y'all can make sure that you feel secure.
We would greatly appreciate that. We-
That work for you? And that'll give you, give y'all time to figure that out, and allow us to keep the process moving at this point, until we hear back from you, then we'll hold it.
Just, just, uh, just by point of clarity, um, keeping the process moving.
Well, because, wha- by giving it first reading, we've done the first reading, but we don't have to do the second reading uh, until we know that y'all have had an opportunity to meet, and y'all have been able to, you may wanna tweak it, you may wanna add something to it, I think-
Noise barriers, stuff like that.
You know, I mean, there might be some things y'all wanna talk about, and so that'll give y'all time to do it, so that both parties can move together and feel good about the process.
That would be extremely important to us, thank you.
Okay. Um, Mr. McCutcheon, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna give a first reading, and we'll hold it and give you an opportunity to connect with these folks and kinda work together.
Mr. Mayor? Now, remember, remember now, this gives you and your, and neighbors, an opportunity to talk, and to talk with Brother McCutcheon.
I think the deed restrictions will give them the, the satisfaction, but we all need to make sure you understand it exactly.
Yeah. And I think that's what you're asking.
Yes, exactly.
Yes, sir.
Coach Brooks is a 1998 graduate of Drew High School. It's great to see you again. We would like to put the full court press on your neighborhood to get annexed into the city. I know you're in the county right now. Would love to come out there and present to you about all the wonderful things and the services we have here at the City of Columbia, sir.
We're very open-minded, we just want some input.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, real brief-
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Brooks, what are some of those concerns that you said you and the neighbors are, have?
Well, like I said, going to light industry, uh, our life has changed. Um, you know, our streets have changed in terms of damage. Water backups, we didn't have that problem prior, now we're getting water, uh, into our lawns. We're pressure washing the house twice as much as we used to, just because of the sand, dust piles that are there and they're blowing into our community. It's, it's changed drastically. The noise level, uh, unbelievable. So we're experiencing some changes there.
And Councilman Bailey, I would like to ask staff if we could get an update on the penny project that's going out there, the repaving, for, for all that increased traffic, to see how that can also play into the noise barrier that you're affected by, sir.
And, and by redeveloping that part, too, we're gonna get rid of a lot of this loose sand and dirt, it's all being pushed on the backside of this, so there's some real opportunities, but we also, uh, our staff is here from, uh, water, uh, I don't know. Clint, there you are. Clint, if you can have Ms. Higgins and others check in on the stormwater and others, 'cause that may be something on our end that we could address. 'Cause I'm assuming that y'all are on our water and sewer, so.
Right.
Listen, that is, that just adds in another conversation.
Yeah.
Which I think is very essential.
Yes, so we'll-
Thank you, sir.
We'll have it, y'all get connected, and then we'll, we'll, we'll hold the next reading until we hear back.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I have one quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
What's your ad- what street do you live on?
I'm 1817, I'm directly next door. I'm 1817, I'm directly next door.
Or on Smith?
On Smith, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right. All ready to vote?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickaman?
Aye.
Thank you.
That concludes your zoning public hearing, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hampton, that was short and sweet.
Thank you.
Thank you, Krista. Item 26 under Resolutions, Resolution Number R 2025-0 through 8 authorizing acceptance and dedication of streets known as a portion of Fetter Bush Road, Fetter Brush Court, and I think it's Fetter Bush Court, and a portion of Bramble Road located in Wood Creek Farms Development.
Wood Creek.
Oh, that's in Wood Creek.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickaman?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item 27, Resolution Number R 2025-039 authorizing acceptance and dedication of streets known as a portion of Fetter Bush Road, Lost Dog Court, and Deer Crossing Road located in Wood Creek Farms Development.
Motion to approve?
So move. Second.
A motion and a second? Any further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Herbert?
Dr. Bustles? Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickaman?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item 28, Resolution Number R 2025-040 certifying building site as an abandoned building pursuant to the South Carolina Abandoned Buildings Revitalization Act Title 12, Chapter 67, Section 1267-100 of the South Carolina Code of Laws as amended regarding property located at 1301 Laurel Street.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second? Is this what I think it is? The future home, no name?
I believe it is.
I believe it is.
Yes, sir.
Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Herbert?
Dr. Bustles? Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickaman?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item 29, Resolution Number R 2025-041 certifying building site as an abandoned building pursuant to the South Carolina Abandoned Buildings Revitalization Act Title 12, Chapter 67, Section 1267-100 of the South Carolina Code of Laws as amended regarding property located at 1717 Laurel Street.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve?
Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Seeing no discussion, Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
And Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickaman?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item 30, Resolution Number R 2025-048 certifying building site as an abandoned building pursuant to the South Carolina Abandoned Buildings Revitalization Act Title 12, Chapter 67, Section 1267-100 of the South Carolina Code as amended regarding property located at 1777 St. Julian Place.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
There's a second? Motion and a second? Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickaman?
Aye.
Event resolutions, item 31, Resolution Number R 2025-045 authorizing consumption of beer, wine, and liquor at the Palmetto Peanut Boil Fundraiser in the 2900 block of Divine Street on Saturday, September 20, 2025, with a rank contingency date of Saturday, September 27, 2025.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second? Any further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickaman?
Other matters, item 38, the fiscal year 2024, 2025 special revenue allocations. Ms. Missy Kaufman, our Assistant City Manager for Strategic Initiatives and Innovation, will come forward to assist, and we will hear from the Hospitality Tax Advisory Committee recommendations represented by Ms. Kelly Glenn, the committee chair, followed by the State Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee represented by Mr. Hal Stevenson, the committee chair, and the line item agencies will be handled by Ms. Kaufman.
Ms. Wilson, did we remove item 31 from the agenda, the event resolution for the Peanut Boil Fundraiser, September 20, 2025?
Well, you all just voted on that, and I was just waiting on the mayor to close that vote out.
Appreciate it.
Did you vote for it? Thank you.
Sorry. I thought I already voted, I'm working on the next one.
I see you multitasking.
Did you get a hospitality handout? Did you get a handout?
Good afternoon, City Council, Ms. Wilson, City Manager, and City Clerk. Thank you all. We're going to first let State Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee Chair Hal Stevenson come and present first for some timing, and otherwise then we'll proceed.
Excuse me, Missy, is there any way we can get a copy of that? They have the copy online, but I don't have a copy of it now.
Yes, sir.
Could you please? Hey, Hal.
Hey, how you doing, then?
Fine.
Mr. Mayor, member of council, I will be very quick if it's okay with y'all. I think the recommendation is given to y'all in a letter. I just wanted to come before you and see if you had any questions about it or any question that I could answer from the committee for you. Okay, that's my presentation. Thank you. Thank you for your hard work.
First of all, who's here from your committee? You want to introduce your committee members that are here?
I am the only-
You're in?
Any of you here?
Aye, bye, Hal.
All right. I knew you were getting worried.
Thank you very much. Okay, and now we will have, hear from the Hospitality Tax Advisory Committee, and we do have several committee members here today with Hospitality Tax. Ms. Kelly Glenn, committee chair, will present their recommendations.
Good afternoon.
Missy, excuse me, can I get the list? I need to get the list before we-
We're making a copy for you right now.
Okay. You have a-
Good afternoon, Mayor Rickaman and council members. I'm Kelly Glenn, I am the chair of the 2526 Hospitality Tax Advisory-
Not just the chair, you're world famous franchisor of-
The Village Idiot Pizza, I'm also the owner of The Village Idiot Pizza.
Yeah.
I want to thank the committee members that are here and are not here, sitting right behind me, for their-
Can y'all stand, please, and be recognized? It's not an easy job.
A lot of hard work and dedication went into four days, four rigorous days, very little breaks, to review 73 applications, hear in-person interviews from all the applicants, and we really thank you for the opportunity to present our recommendations on 61 total groups that we saw. I'm here to answer any questions. Go easy on me.
Well, first of all, Kel, I want to tell y'all, by adding the notes that you did was very helpful for us also, and, and you know, obviously, we're going to take all y'all's recommendations, we're probably going to increase some folks, some just with feeling with some surplus that we have that we feel is necessary and that we feel strongly about. It made it a lot easier for us this year with the notes that y'all shared with us, and I appreciate that. I don't know whose idea, if it was yours or the committee as a whole, but it made a big difference for us, really to understand. You know, also, it also made us realize with the folks that have carryforwards and so forth, we need to get on them. You need to spend your money, or we ain't giving you any more money. Because that's just, that's holding up. But it was good to know the reasoning why, and the increase is all because we don't get to read every application, so we were really trusting, but it also allows us to understand when we're making that vote and talking forward about what's going on. So, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Having done this for many years, this is my second time on the committee, seeing it line by line, I thought might be helpful, so.
I don't, I know the rest of council thinks the same way.
It was a group effort. It was a group effort.
To do that. Do y'all have any questions for Kelly? Or the committee?
I love that, thank you.
It's a good sign. While we're waiting on copies, I'm going to kind of go through some of the feedback I got from council on, on, we're going to leave the 122 correct in the account.
Okay.
And what we would like to do is for these added, pull those from our fund.
Okay.
The first one was Black Pages International, we want to add $50,000 to that. This year's event was over the chart, and the return that we saw and the committee engagement was unbelievable. 13 Columbia Classic Ballet, council would like to add 25,000 to that. Columbia College SC Wellness and Action Festival, we'd like that to be an added 10,000. Columbia Fashion Week Alliance, would like that to have 10,000. Homes for the Holiday Tour, we'd like to see that increased by another 1,500. Dapper and Distinguished Gentlemen, we want to see that 30,000 to complete the film series of that, please. We'd like to see Divine Street increased by 20,000. We'd like to see First Thursday increased by 10. We'd like to see Hoopology increased by 3,500. We'd like to see the Noma Foundation increased by 20. The South Carolina After School Alliance increased by 5. Trustis Theater, we'd like to add 100,000 for capital. And then, WOW Performing Arts Center, we'd like to see that add 19,500 to that. Was there anything that I missed for the council shared?
Mr. Mayor, I know there is an additional item that was discussed today regarding public safety initiative.
Do we have a dollar amount that we need to add to that?
80,000.
How much?
80.
80? Public safety, we just want to see CPD, is that? Oh, yeah. I almost forgot one, I don't know how I did that. We wanted to add 10,000 for Special Olympics.
Sorry. Yes, sir.
10,000 for Special Olympics, I forgot that one, I'm sorry.
All right.
And then, that 80 for the CPD special projects.
How much for Special Olympics?
10.
Okay. All right. And of course, just to read it, we will publish these once we get everything squared away. The funding for this does not come from the committee's allocation, but from reserves-
Y'all still have a reserve from the committee to address some of those future asks that y'all may have.
Right, and of course, all of these will be still subject to eligibility and reimbursement-
All of it's to eligibility, as you know, and hopefully, you know, today with all the help that the staff and everybody have put in, people know how to spend it, at least I hope they do. If not, then we'll give it to somebody else.
We do give groups up to one year, but after that, then they are-
And I think we do need to, and this doesn't need to come from the committee, but I do think it needs to come to us, is to reach out to the organizations that are struggling to spend some of that money to figure out what we got to do to help them, or give them a timeframe to either do it or give it back.
Absolutely.
Because we can distribute that to other organizations.
Right, and of course, an appreciation to the committee, they are very good at guiding these groups when they come in, in terms of giving them, you know, recommendations or advice in terms of what we're working, what areas to approve, so it's very helpful, I think, to the organizations that do come and interview, which makes the process even better by hearing directly.
Yes, ma'am.
We appreciate the committee very much.
Do you need a motion?
Yes.
For that?
For the Hospitality Tax Committee allocations.
Motion to approve?
Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
With the amendments?
With all the amendments attached? With that, Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Oh, yes.
Mayor Rickaman?
Aye.
Thank you.
Did you approve the accommodations?
We haven't done accommodations. Is there a motion to accept the accommodations committee recommendation?
Second.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Dr. Bustles is recusing herself because she's an ambassador, and the Experience Columbia receives money through the Conventions Bureau that she's an ambassador for, so that's why she got up, just so public notice.
Thank you. Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickaman?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you.
And then two other items would be the line item groups.
Yep.
And then the Experience Columbia.
So... She got the line item. Didn't you see that? It's the line item. Were there any changes or recommendations from the line item groups from council? Mr. Brown, Dr. Bustles, anyone? Line item?
No.
With that, can I get a motion, then?
So moved.
Got a motion and a second?
Second.
Second. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickaman?
Aye.
Thank you.
For the line item agencies, are you making specific allocations?
For the recommendations that are here. So, there is the recommendation for here was 1 point, right?
That's the requested amount? Recommendations would come straight from council.
I thought y'all already had this on here. I'm... Well, we need to rescind that vote. And so, do we have a recommenda... Well...
Well, so, is, just for my clarity, is there a recommendation from the committee?
There is no committee for the line items. No, staff does not make recommendations on these allocations.
So, I would recommend for the Columbia Museum Art, 1.2. Anybody have heartburn with that?
No. That's reasonable.
CMFA 250. Parks and Rec Foundation, 75. Adventure, 550. 250 for SC 63.
How much?
250. Historic Columbia, 800. And One Columbia, 110.
Just noting that Museum of Art was less than what you funded last year.
What?
Museum of Art was less than what you funded last year.
Can you say that again?
If you pulled this up.
Oh, I'm sorry. The Museum of Art, making sure that was 2, you were saying 250?
No, we said 1.2.
I'm sorry, Music Festival Association.
Was 250, right?
250, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. It should be 260. I read 250.
Okay.
It's laxia. I'm certified like you.
All right. We'll do the math on that one, so.
And then we have, we need a motion?
Yes, please.
We did 110? Yeah. Is there a motion?
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
Mr. Herbert, you got questions?
No, I'm sure this is assuming that those numbers add up precisely to what we have in the balance, yes.
All right. With that, Madam Clerk?
All right. Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickaman?
Aye.
And then the last remaining item is the Columbia Metropolitan Convention Center Authority. Their allocation for operations of the facility is a request of 3 million from the Tourism Development Fee.
What's that figure, Missy? I can't...
3 million. And these funds are budgeted. There are funds available in the budget for the Convention Center and the Tourism Development Fee Fund.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yes, sir. May I get clarification on what we're approving?
The Convention Center.
And then we're not, what about the other organization? Capital City, Lake Murray Country Regional Tourism Board.
That's on the ATAX.
Is that not what that is?
No, that's different. That's for the marketing, yes, ma'am. That was on the ATAX.
Move the previous question.
That's good.
And what was that amount again?
3 million?
You good on the CDI fund?
Yes. Tourism Development Fee is...
Tourism Development Fee for the Convention Center in the amount of...
3 million.
3 million dollars. Thank you. Thank you for your patience. You ready for the roll?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles? Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickaman?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Missy.
Just a reminder, thanks to the Hospitality Tax Committee. Thank you all so much. Let me, would you all stand for just a moment, again? Thank you all so much. You involved yourselves in the hard process of going through 73 applications. It's hard, and we thank you for that. We thank you for what you've done, and yet, we thank you for this city of ours who will benefit from your generosity. Thank you all so much. Thank you.
Can take up City Council Committee Referrals, Reports, and New Business, starting with item 39, council is asked to refer the establishment of a process for supporting state low-income housing tax credit projects to the Community Development Committee as requested by city administration.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickaman?
Aye.
Thank you.
I added 39A, Mr. Mayor, referring the STR discussion out of the Community Development Committee to the August 5th Work Session.
Is there a motion, Mr.?
August 5th? You say August 5th, right?
Yes, sir.
Is there a motion, Mr. Bailey?
So moved.
Got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Brennan?
Yes.
McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickaman?
Aye.
Thank you.
There other committee referrals, reports, or new business?
Thank you.
Not at this time.
Mr. Mayor, the executive session items as listed, we can receive a motion with the addition of a contractual matter concerning the Columbia Richland 911 Communications.
Have public input first?
Yes, of course.
I don't want to miss it twice.
Yeah. We, that was an oversight on our part, so we'll make sure that that is correct going forward. We have two individuals signed up to speak, and we will start with Ms. Diane Wiley, and she'll be followed by Mr. Wade Fulmer. We'll remind both speakers that they have a total of three minutes.
Good evening, Ms. Wiley.
Good afternoon.
Welcome to downtown Columbia.
Oh, yes. Excuse me. I'd have been to a funeral today, and I had to work in my church. And I had to have the church closed. Yeah, my husband's brother died six months ago.
I'm sorry to hear that.
But anyway, this is what I wanted to ask. We have a problem on Beltline Boulevard with that bus. I want everybody to hear this, with the bus system. There's trash. They're having sex in the back of the Roses. Every day, I call the city.
Which site on Beltline?
Right beside the City Water Treatment. Yeah. They sneak that on. Wasn't, no.
I thought you was talking about Rose bushes. I wasn't thinking about Roses, the store.
They sneak that one. It wasn't a sign up.
And those... The trash not getting picked up?
Trash every day. First, I want to say, they sneak that in our neighborhood. We're not going to stand for this.
Don't want a bus stop?
No, we don't want that in our neighborhood.
Don't want people to get on the bus and ride.
Not there, not there. It wouldn't be happening in other neighborhoods.
This is the Greyhound, right?
I've been quiet lately, but I'm wide open now.
Is this the Comet or the Grey?
Yeah.
Stagecoach.
Yes, the stagecoach.
I was confused.
You know, it's like every, and we can't get apart, because I'm fighting for trash all the time. I haven't given up. I've just been slowing down because I've been traveling a little bit. But I thought they would just come and pick up people every now and then, but they are there. They're having sex in the back. We told the policeman at our meeting Tuesday, and I called the city about, I'mma call every day until they get right.
So, there's trash. What else? I want to make sure that we address it all. Loitering?
Yeah, yeah. Okay. I get up early and go to the church every morning. If I need to take some pictures, I will.
No, we're going to call them and address it with the southeastern coast.
They didn't come to us to ask. We tired. I'm not tired of fighting, but I want something positive in our neighborhood. What, how they got there? I'm going to, I got to get a list of zoning thing, because, you know, you're not going to keep doing this. You know, you're not going to keep doing this. We got to use car lots, and it look like they get tired of hearing me.
Yeah, I don't, my, the last time I knew that they were going to, yeah, they were going to West Columbia on Platt Springs Road.
They are on Beltline beside the water treatment place.
Yeah, we know where it's from.
All right. I got you, Ms. Wiley.
Please, please. You don't want me to grow my horns.
No, I don't want to see you. I only want to see you smile. I don't want to see you brown.
My pastor have been praying for me, because he knew my husband was the one that's calming me down. But when I see that trash out there, and when he says something about the zoning, cross the street where the water, I mean, where the Dollar Tree, that need to be zoned into the city. It look like trash. It really look like trash. That used to be a really nice neighborhood.
From the Dollar Tree.
Yeah, behind there with those nice houses. Those used to be nice houses, very nice houses.
Yeah, that corner, that corner coming out back to Edgewood.
I've been real quiet, but I'm back to my old self. I don't want to be like that. I don't want to be. Our insurance went up, because we got this trash in our neighborhood. It got to stop.
Insurance went up because the insurance goes up every year.
Uh-uh, uh-uh. We need restaurants in our neighborhoods. We need something positive.
I'm going to sign you up for cooking class unless you stop.
We don't even have a park now, and we got an older neighborhood. We don't even have a park. 650, probably, 690 houses now.
Now, Ms. Wiley?
Yes, sir.
Now, Ms. Wiley, what have we been doing in your neighborhood?
Yeah, you've been doing, you've been doing good on that, but we still need, and we need hotels.
Yeah, we going to keep doing. Let me get them a call and find out what's going on.
Get them a call and tell them to get in contact with me. You got my number?
Yes, ma'am. I'm going to tell them that you're going to come by there every morning and shake them up.
Oh, I do. I come by, look, I'm a rider. I know everything going in Columbia.
I didn't, I did not know that Greyhound was...
And I be like, I can't fight for nobody else's neighborhood. I'm trying to fight for my own. And I thank you, Sheriff Hallbrook. I know I aggravates you.
Thank you, Ms. Wiley.
Mr. Wade Fulmer?
Good afternoon. I'd just like to say, Ms. Diane is one of my heroes. I remember the only other time I brought an issue wrong before city council. Time passes quickly. Sometimes the better ideals are whitewashed away. 2007, when a constituent victim could no immediate action and resolution with only one speak before council. 2007, when a promise of give us two weeks to look into was a promise kept in less than two weeks. Health and order were more than a rhetoric and a void slogan. Customer service was an honored duty done, not just an idols image campaign. I was not referred here and there. I was not dropped. That, too, was both a civil rights and order wrong, done by something, someone of the chain. 2007, two officials met with me within two weeks with facts, with duty done, wrong acknowledged, not a problem again. The difference, two weeks. Now, it's been 22 months. The difference here, that system harm and brokenness is covered over. No discernment, no accountability, only silence, distraction, and delay. Oh, and the discounted good work of departments who did their duty. While that top rung seems to play squash, its legacy, 22 months of silence, dereliction, obstruction, and abuse of power cover over. City-chosen, broken system nuisance. City dereliction nuisance, non-enforcement privilege cover over. Chain obstructed by top rung and shame. I had sent an email earlier today for this meeting, and I won't go into it, but that was all about the Freedom of Information request that I filed on April the 1st. You have details and the information you got today. And I went and talked with people and did what I was supposed to do, and got no response from Freedom of Information since my visit at the office with Mr. Shivers. And I want you to understand, Mr. Shivers and the other gentleman who sent me emails, they are not the problem. I have to go back to, the problem is the system, and somebody's not responding, and I feel like there's not supervision, or there's not training. I don't know what it is, but there's obstruction. With all that I've talked about for these 20 months, there is obstruction in the advice that comes when there's not discernment and facts looked at. I appreciate your time. Of course, I'll be back with more detail, but thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Fulmer. We'll, I don't know about your FOI, but I'll find it, but I do want to remind everyone, and yourself, is that we received all your information. You went to court, you made some accusations, and we've gone through, our staff has met with you, council's talked to you, we've heard you, but there's nothing on our end. You had your opportunity, and it didn't go your way, and I'm sorry about that. But I will tell you that we will look into the FOI, because I don't know why that's not here, but to say it's a cover-up is not correct, okay? And I don't, you have every right to stand here and talk to us, and share with us, and email with us, and we'll always give you that opportunity. But at a certain point, I can't let you continue to say that we're covering up something, because that's simply not the case, okay?
If I can't get information, and I can't get answers to the questions, that's why I feel it's that way.
I've heard you every time you've been here. It's the first time I heard that you filed an FOI, so let me look into that for you.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
All right. You ready for the motion for executive session?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session for the receipt of legal advice relating to a pending threatened or potential claim pursuant to SC Code 3470A2, Serena Bernard Jones versus City of Columbia, and the estate of Kevin Bolden versus the City of Columbia.
Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second.
Mr. Mayor, we would just add the other item, Contractual Columbia Richland 911 Communications.
Noted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
There's three, there's three items.
Three items. Yes, sir. Got a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Herbert?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickaman?
Aye.
Thank you.